I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Halifax School Committee on May 6, 2024, at 6:01 PM. And this is a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. And if anyone is intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, they should notify me at this time. All right, let's start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to acknowledge and schedule any visitors that want to speak, but I just want to say something first. I ran the meeting last month in an unusual fashion. It is not normal to take ongoing comments from the audience union and so forth. I allowed it in the case of the budget discussion because of the nature of the issues we were discussing and because I wanted to ensure diverse opinions were heard, were shared and heard. Tonight, we are returning to normal meeting structure. There will be a brief period right now for public comment. If you would like to speak, you need to limit your comments to three minutes, and the committee is not obligated to respond to your comments. And when public participation is done, we'll proceed with the rest of the agenda. And all speakers thereafter would have to be recognized by the chair. Those that are not recognized by the chair are not permitted to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak right now?
I'd like to speak, David Macio, 1610th Ave.
Okay.
I actually have to leave early because I have to pick somebody up at the airport, but there's a lot of questions that I have. I need more than three minutes.
We can only allow three minutes. You can email the school committee if you--
No, we need to address this tonight. It's regarding the bus situation that we're going to be facing with the children. So we need to get this categorized quickly. And I need to be more understanding of why we're making the cuts. Do you want questions now?
You have three minutes and--
Okay. Okay, what is a student contract with Halifax and First Student? Do we have a contractual agreement that states that from here to the following, the end of the year, that we're contracted to pay the bus routes?
We do have--
Yes, okay, that was the answer. Okay. The cuts that we're looking at for the First Student to eliminate two buses, what cuts are we making with the private busing?
What do you mean, the special ed busing?
There's students that go to other schools that we are obligated to pay by state?
Right, we're obligated to--
Obligated, all right. What about the other students that are living in other towns that we're picking up? Who's paying for those?
The town, if a student is coming from another district, which I don't really think happens, they would be bused by their district.
Okay, students, I'm not naming names, but there's students that live in Halifax. Parents had the students, the students were removed from their parents. They're bused out of another town. They're privately bused from another town into Halifax.
DCF and homeless situations?
They're paying for that, okay. Did First Student and Halifax Elementary School or the school committee, did you guys do an actual study on the bus routes and how many students per bus and how long it's going to take with making these new cuts?
I would defer to the principal on that.
I would say that Principal Bowdre anticipates discussing the potential impact of busing cuts in the presentation this evening.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Principal Bowdre will address that in his budget presentation this evening.
Okay, with longer bus, on bus schedule times, has the school committee prepared to understand what other students are going to need, especially kids with IEP plans that need more time at home or at night?
That is more of a question for the school, not the school committee.
But you guys are making the cuts.
We're recommending the budget amount, and the school has recommended the cuts to be made.
Why are the cuts being made?
The cuts are being made because our budget came in too large for the town to pay.
Why are they larger?
This has been actually covered in a lot of school committee meetings and will be covered later in the budget presentation.
I have three minutes.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, it's a very long explanation with entailing a lot of different aspects of-- I mean, it's longer than three minutes to respond.
With the extra students that are coming into town that aren't--
We don't have extra students coming into town.
We're not increasing the students for next year?
Nope. In fact, our enrollment's been going down.
The numbers are going down?
Correct.
With kindergarten and everything coming--
Well, I don't know the kindergarten numbers yet, but our enrollment has been going down.
So we don't have an answer for that yet?
I believe we'll have an answer of how big our kindergarten classes, but over the last 10 years, our school enrollment has decreased.
Okay.
There's your time. If you have any other--
Who will be liable for the younger kids that are going to be on longer bus routes with parents that can't be at those times versus the times before? With the extended bus time?
I believe that will be covered by Principal Bowdre's presentation and--
Do we have a time, what time that's going to come up?
It's on the agenda as--
I do have an agenda for me. Do you have a time?
I don't have a time because I don't know how long the discussion--
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi.
Hi.
I'd like to speak also, a wonderful introduction and presentation.
Can you say your name, please?
Oh, yeah, sure, Jennifer Kearsen.
Thank you.
Has anyone sitting at the table, whether you're a member of the school committee or an admin of the school, received any information about safety concerns from the bus company, or thought change?
Will that be covered in the presentation, if I may?
Yes, we have, both Principal Bowdre and our business director have had conversations, as well as myself have participated in the conversation with the bus company.
Okay, well, I'd like to give two perspectives. As a parent who's in that ATS and has a bus route in town, in your own words, you stated working parents who ride bus transportation for their children. The only way to just relieve those 20% of transportation would be, in my opinion, by maybe saving time in lives. I've seen buses moving as late as 8:29 at ATS. My daughter arrives at 8:22. How will this change with bus buses? Wouldn't knowing multiple kids that a stop take longer than one or two students anyways, while combining three stops to one might save some time? I don't think it would be pretty at all. So my daughter's only in her 30th grade. She had chosen to skip her bus at home on occasion to have breakfast at school. While she went twice because she can't and won't do it anymore because she doesn't have enough time to eat breakfast before being asked to work class, then she is out without much time. She is fortunate to not be relying on the school's free breakfast program, but what are all the students going to rely on? As working parents, child's videos get off the bus and then a missile listens to a phone door, and now such a fast bus will walk from the end of the road. Are you supposed to now hire your kid home to ensure that your child makes it home safely on top of the steadily increasing taxes? The after-school program is $23 a day just for after-school care, meaning an extra $115 a week or $460 per month per child. Let's say you can find babysitter to ensure your child gets home safely. You can have a cheap rate of $20 per hour, looking at adding standard expense, $100 a week on a line of dollars. Not sure about you, but I find it hard to believe working families that can afford basically ad-mentioned accounting to their budgets for a certain set of their previously operated. From a driver's perspective, I have many safety concerns. The width of the bus age is just 138 inches wide. We are talking to him, free children in two seats every seat, giving him each across the 12 and 1/2 inches of space for themselves, the backpacks and any belongings they may be bringing to school, including instruments, smoke, sneakers, water bottles, et cetera. On one hand, behavior issues are already an issue on the bus. How do we accommodate more children inside spaces with young people at the school? There are students that literally cannot get along with one other child on the bus without having issues. Between physical and verbal issues, it is necessary to have a space to separate students on occasion. It was stated in behaviors that ATS is so busy, she took her old skates and she can box to come back so much. Issues that arise in the classroom always spill over onto the students' background with us. A bus has one rider to physically drive it to sleep while maintaining rules and leaders for two or three times the number of students in any classroom setting here. Yet little resources for putting up these wires beside separating students. With built-bus, we have no means to do that. While this conversation spacing issue is the fact that things that occur on the bus other than making errors that would require students to have more space. When a student gets in a sleep, there's going to be no way to contain that student for possibly leading on others. Or a student gets sick to a stomach. Currently, the air is terminal, so it's uncut, and students dispersed from nearby seat, not the common crossfire. For the full bus, we have at least two and so. We are also looking at increased transmission analysis, whether it's humming holes, global shut, or the students being stranded to more confined seating. Furthermore, given there are no seat belts on the bus, the only way to save the lives of the buses is to have each and every child completely contained in their seat. Does the seatbelt of them access a tuck-in in case of an accident or adverse traffic event? Spacing around this is persuaded to be able to fit half-stairs flat. However, as the children get older, they end up hanging over in the aisle when these students are seated together. Who decides what unfortunate child gets the aisle seat and the highest chance of injury in action? On another note, say, if Johnny gets off and walks home from her license plate to the bus, although Sissy walks home and realizes her door is unlocked. It's usually unlocked and it is locked today. Although Mary walks home, her automatic lock does nothing to adapt that. Who's responsible for the child? Do they sit outside in any and all weather conditions awaiting someone to arrive to help them? Do they all put a cell phone they can use to help them? Who do they call? Do they call their parents who are coming home early at work? How about the increasing amount of wildlife that feeds on the area? We are all aware that they are here now and have been told that they are here to stay, that they need to adapt to that. There were multiple signs last year where we, as drivers, were warned about the location of their act, keep a close eye of the safety of the children getting out of the bus. How can we do this when we can't even keep that going into the house? How about the students walking home, so simple. We are talking of walking to a point of bus stop in any and all weather conditions. The rush time downward on busier roads without turning into some side streets, the line of cars behind the buses goes very quickly. So now you have a line of cars watching a child get off the bus and walking home. It seems to say there's not a safe place to go until down the road on seeing that kind of an attitude. Before you say this isn't something likely of a phenomenon, let's be reminded that we are changing something that's going to make the children more vulnerable by being alone. The way things are done now, which has disabled their ethics on tour. So my question is, who's looking after the safety of the children?
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to review and vote the regular minutes of March 14th and April 1st meetings. Now where someone's ready, we can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 14th, 2024, and April 1st, 2024.
Paul's second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Karen? All right. All right. Approval of bill schedule.
I have brought with me tonight 10 warrants totaling $654,693 to be signed and then delivered to town hall in the morning.
I did not receive any school committee correspondence or reports except-- oh, no, the flyer is down there, okay. Any future agenda items for committee? Okay, all right, let's discuss the subcommittees versus policy.
Put it on the--
Okay. Negotiations, we are going to discuss in the executive session after Pilgrim Area Collaborative.
April 4th, and I filled a fire report on that one a minute ago, just like three days ago, which was our last meeting for the, for the last meeting this year. The budget was approved. Their enrollment is 122.
We can't hear you, we're going to do some--
The PAC budget is approved. They, their enrollment is 122. They're moving from Plymouth to Silver Lake for just housing. By, as part of Silver Lake, they're just visiting, moving and location. That was for PAC.
Okay, thank you. Youth and Recreation? A fifth, sixth grade dance is in the works and, or has already occurred, and that's all I have. Okay, PTO?
April 10th, they're talking about new fundraising, trying to get the wrong lizards perhaps, maybe also a golf outing fundraiser, not till next year. They did an art to remember fundraiser that was really successful thanks to the art teacher, Mrs. Bayo. They are thinking about lots of new ideas for fundraising in general. They are doing a Bus Driver Appreciation Day, Teacher Staff Appreciation Week. They're trying to really help out with funding for students, for teachers, for basic supplies that are more difficult to attain now with the current budget. They were talking about ordering fueling T-shirts. They are reorganizing a little bit with trying to start fresh as a nonprofit fundraising entity. Mr. DeSantis was not present, but sent us an update at the time. 41 days left, which is different now. Big success with winter math challenge, 85% participation, 80% for the ELA participation, and there was a bubble party before the second grade class. And the SEI for that month was how to solve problems.
Okay, capital budget, did they meet? I don't think so. Admin review, committee?
No update.
No update, okay. DEIV Subcommittee?
So Karen and I touched base briefly before this meeting. Given the focus of the budget, we kind of put a table on, doing considerable work on that this month to like focus to more pressing matters for our committee as a whole. But I did want to acknowledge, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for sharing the listed responsibility to be asked for in March. So thank you for that. We'll do that part of the calendar later. Thank you.
And Union 31 has not met, so--
The last time it met was on March--
March 14th.
Yep.
All right, so I'll turn the time over to Mr. Bowdre for his report.
All right. Thank you. Let's see. We have our school council met on April 24th. Continued work on the handbook and also on the school council survey. The water update, right now, we have, the filters have been put on all areas, water bubblers and in the kitchen, but they have not been tested yet.
Do we have a dollar figure where we're at right now with the water?
Let's see. I know we talked about it last month. I can, let's see. I can search for, let's see, water expenses. Right now, what we have is a little over $19,000.
So you've put the filters in, but you haven't rerun the tests that--
Correct. Yeah.
When is that happening?
We do not have a date yet.
Okay.
So then our students using--
They're off. No, they're off.
The ones that--
They're still using the--
They're still using the water tanks.
Okay.
So the filters are in place, are they just like running them temporarily? Like to--
They've only been installed, but they haven't, we haven't actually turned them on yet until we have had them tested. And we don't, we don't have a date yet for them to be tested.
Our Director of Facilities is setting up a date with the water company that did our testing earlier this year. So we're waiting for a date from them now that it's, the work has been completed. They were waiting for us to verify that the work had been completed before they could give us a date.
And I mean, I'm sure they're on top of it, but my concern is just once the filters are replaced, like one water bubble might be used six times as often as another. So how do you know when to replace the filters? If there's like some sort of alarm system on them that needs to be replaced? That was my concern before.
So our custodians, they have a record book of all the filters and the usage, so they know when they're--
It's a lot. It's a great, awesome place.
And then just getting into the budget, so you want to--
Is there the flyer you wanted us to approve for football?
I did not receive a flyer.
Isn't there the training camp one? Yeah. This one, right? The training camp for Warrior Football?
So I would just mention to the school committee that this is, as far as I know, it's a not-for-not, it's not nonprofit, albeit this organization works with students, if I'm thinking of the right one, but I can't log in.
It is, yeah.
This is Silver Lake Youth Football.
So Silver Lake Youth Football, although it says Silver Lake, is not an affiliate of Silver Lake Regional School District, just so that the committee is aware.
Right. But it's, yeah, it's this, it's like basketball in the summer program.
I'll make a motion to approve the flyer.
Okay.
Paul's second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Yes?
Just a point, you can't do anything about it. I know, I know you guys did a good job. But since you're talking to each other, you're rushing the crowd, so this place is maybe better served watching from home. So I mentioned this to Dr. environment, which is not anybody's fault up there, but if we can make enough to speak to the crowd, who is there supporting something?
So you can hear better if I'm speaking out to hear? Like, okay--
We're talking to each other, which is--
Okay.
But we can't hear anything.
Okay, but I'm just asking, like, you can hear me right now, so if I-- Yes.
Right now, I can.
So if--
If you're in the back part of the room, no law of the set up, almost law of the set up.
Okay, well, I will do--
Not with no one's fault.
No, I know, no--
Because you have to speak up for all the people that are right here.
Well, there is also, the front row is available.
But now for the back, back four row, you've heard that.
Okay, well, we will do our best to talk as loud as we can and out towards you. All right, so that's all set. And then now I'll turn over the time to Principal Bowdre for our budget update.
If I may give a brief introduction to this. Both Principal Bowdre and our Director of Finance and Operations both have information to present to you tonight. Recognizing that they have been asked to provide you with additional by, at our last meeting with the town, the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, we were asked to present to the school committee what additional cuts might look like. So that is what Principal Bowdre has provided for you tonight. And Sarah also has some updates since our last meeting in terms of how other budgets and they were voted in terms of Silver Lake, how that, excuse me, will affect-- how that will affect the Halifax budget as well.
Can you indicate which flyer we're looking at?
It's called May Budget.
Could you ask me about the change?
Yes.
Can you get your magic button here?
You hit the magic button.
We've got a mini version here. You have magic touch here? There we go. Ms. Tebow, our librarian. Let's see here.
This is me?
This is you?
This is me. Can you hear me? Thank you. On April 1st, 2024, the Halifax School Committee voted to reduce the version five budget by $500,000. 380,000 of reductions were delineated in the meeting, and the remaining 120,000 was to be determined later. The previous reductions plus an additional reduction of $143,000 are required to meet the threshold set by the town for the cost of education for FY '25. On this slide here, the, and this was updated on April 1st, the operating assessment for Silver Lake, the portion of the assessment for Halifax On the next slide, the amount that you see here for Halifax, again, is the amount that was voted on April 1st. That was the level surface budget minus $500,000, giving an FY '25 budget of $6,965,138.43. On our next slide is the total cost of education. Again, this is as of April 1st. Total cost of education to Halifax is $15,588,356.14. That is a 4.9% increase over last year, and this is the amount that the Finance Committee has asked to be reduced by another $143,000. This next slide, just to be aware, I belong to a listserv of all the school business managers in the state. There is a discussion on our listserv, which essentially is, where's your budget at compared to last year? And the, out of the over 100 school business managers in the state that have responded to the survey, the mean increase from year to year has been 5.1%. Silver Lake and Union 31 is currently at an 8.4%. If you read through the comments from the school business managers in this thread, they're talking about if the override passes at the town level, we'll be at this percent, and if not, we're going to be cutting 30 staff or we're-- So these budgets that are all over the state this year, you're seeing significant challenges financially. On the next slide, a summary of why our budget is what it is. There were increased costs in fiscal year '25, contractual obligations. When I say contractual obligations, I want to be clear that I'm not just talking teachers' contracts. Yes, the teachers' contracts increased. That's a normal part of the negotiation process. And year-to-year contractual obligations, in addition to that, have increased. The cost of elevator maintenance, the cost of copier machines. So any contract that the school has with a vendor or the district has with a vendor, those contracts are increasing dramatically over the previous year. Health insurance, although health insurance for Halifax teachers is paid by the town, how the school department, the Silver Lake School Department pays health insurance. So there was an increase in health insurance. That shows up in the assessment to the town. There has been an increase in special education and transportation, special education, transportation, and tuitions. And we're seeing a unique situation where not only is there an increase in costs, but we have an increase in the number of students. So that's creating an increase, and the cost of supplies and utilities have risen.
If I may? When she says the increase in the number of students that are being found eligible for special education--
Not the total number of students.
Thank you.
Okay, I think this is your slide.
Thanks, Sarah. So this here is just kind of what we had when we had originally put the budget together, just looking at our priorities when we were looking to reduce the budget. We started with maintaining class size for tier-one instruction, maintain offerings in all specialist classes, maintain student support, utilize grant funding whenever possible to maintain interventions. We also had to-- We also had to take into consideration the special ed service requirements that could be changing for next year and then also providing EL services, adding a .5 position. So what we did here is we put together, these were voted upon last meeting. So originally, it was $380,000 were the cuts, but we made a few small adjustments in terms of support staff and a contractual-
Can I, can I speak to this?
Yes, absolutely.
So two of the, there were changes to two of the cuts that were voted last time. There was a reduction for the assistant principal in a number of days and there was going to be a reduction in the salary. That actually violates the contract. So that $9,000, we paid, yeah, had to be put back in. And then the estimate, I put an asterisk next to it halfway through the list. There are support staff reductions to FTE. The estimate was in there as 40, $58,000, which overestimates the cost of a paraprofessional. When, you know, there may be a paraprofessional making $29,000 a year, but if their position is cut, they would bump a less senior paraprofessional. And so we've been using $25,000 as an estimate. So those are the two changes. And you can see across the bottom that on April 1st, we had discussed $380,000. There were $17,000 in adjustments.
Can I ask real quick? So that puts that 127,000 needs to be designated in addition to the 50,000 that the town has asked us to come back and cut this meeting after our Finance Committee meeting, which puts us at 177 for additional cuts, not 143, which is... Do I have that correct?
That is incorrect.
Is that because, okay, I was just, you know, okay.
So, so I think it would be helpful to look at it this way. You had aimed an April 1st meeting for $500,000 in cuts and you had designated 380,000 of it with 120 to be a player to be named later or, you know, however you want to consider it. And now it's not 120, it's 137. But the 500,000 that you voted on April 1st is still 500,000.
Right. But then, but what I'm saying is, but then we're, we were asked by the town to do an initial 50, so I guess I'm saying that we still have a certain amount that is not designated at this time.
We were asked by the town to do an additional 143,000.
I know, but we got it to, well, I mean, I was, oh, okay, I'll let you, okay.
It's 143,000.
Okay.
Not an additional 50.
I thought, well, I was just cutting, like, well, so I'll let you just keep going.
Back to me?
Back to you.
Back to me. Okay. So can I move on from this one, which was previously voted? Yes. All right, so what we had originally started with was this, but I have a revised slide that we put in there, which looks like this. Yours might not be color-coded, but what we did here is we were able to tier this. So that first tier is to the $500,000 that we originally talked about. So the $93,900 was the adjustment from vocational tuition and transportation. And then we put in supply lines, additional supply lines from the previous had cut from the first set level that we went to. And then there's a support staff reduction of 1.0 of 25,000. So those, those cuts right there amount to 137,000 plus this 363 from before, and that gets us to the 500. And then we tiered it to the next. Originally, our first time that we did our budget proposal, we had our second tier was at 550,000. So proposal, if we get to that point, these two positions is a .5 support staff reduction and our behaviorist position to a .5 as well. Adding those together, that would bring us to 550,000. And then if we are asked to go to our level three here, to 643,000, reducing our specialists and losing our reading specialist if we have to get to that point.
I need a question for clarification on this chart. And I think this is what Lauren, why we're trying to get at. But the vocational, adjustment for vocational tuition and transportation of 93,000, that in essence is money that had been budgeted that we realized we don't need.
Correct.
So we're not really cutting that. We found that and it is therefore factoring into the 500,000 that we need to find. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just say for clarification, the money wasn't found as much as the deadline to apply for IUD district vocational was April 1st. So after April 1st, we knew exactly how many students were going to attend or applying to IUD district vocational. I would also say at this time, in terms of the school committee's vote with regards to busing, I recall that we explained to the school committee that we would meet with the bus company to determine the feasibility of the routes. And they have provided Principal Bowdre and our Director of Finance and Operations with, with the routes and the possibilities. And so I think it's important for us to acknowledge that in fact, while it is feasible, it's going to mean more group stops and it may also include assigned seating.
That's almost impossible for students for a bus driver to try and correct, to drive.
Excuse me, you cannot talk without addressing the chair.
David Monacio, 16, 10th out.
I don't have to-
Thank you.
I'm not acknowledging you right now.
Superintendent Prue. To assign seating-
You can't talk to Superintendent Prue.
You're asking a bus driver that's going to have 60-plus kids to try and assign seats during the bus route?
Sir, we're letting them explain. Thank you. Go ahead.
Can we talk about buses?
Yes.
So currently, just to clarify with buses, we have, currently have 10 buses. The capacity on the buses is 71. We have at least one passenger bus that has 77. So if we did, we work with our enrollment this year. We are a little under 550 students. So if every student were to be given a seat on the bus, we would definitely have more than enough seats for every child because we try to accommodate. Not every child takes the bus. We approximately, Brian, chime in here for any of these. We have parent pickup and drop-off, but we probably can take in 60 to 75 cars per day on average for students. Then we also have a before program and an after-school program, which is probably about 20 or 30 students in both programs there. Then we also have after-school programs, which we're easily running at 30. So when we look at all those different areas, we're probably running about 300, 350 students that are riding the bus on a daily basis. And when you factor in all those things that we had mentioned there. If you actually took the counts on our bus, you would see we have buses that are as low as 25 that are on a daily ride. And then you'll see buses on a, on a high bus, then you're looking at 55 to 60, which is still under the capacity.
Yes, Karen?
Hey, so just a clarification question. So what does the bus company recommend for the capacity of the bus?
All right, so-
For this, for the school-aged children?
So the bus, when we met the bus company here, we asked them if they could pull this together. And so I'll just, can we just read through what they gave us for feedback?
Sure.
So they had given us, one, for one, they actually gave with the reduction of the buses. So we would have a low of 52 capacity and a high of 74 for the buses. And that was, again, if every child were to go on a bus, we would definitely have the seating allowed for that. So the feedback from the bus company is, is the following. So high ridership leaves little room for additional enrollment to the areas where buses are at capacity. Maximum capacity is based on three students per seat. 77 passenger vehicles are being utilized for capacity above 70. 77 max bus currently being utilized for bus routes 25, 49, 24 and 23. Many door-to-door stops, short-travel streets and cul-de-sacs have been removed to account for additional students, turnaround points and the need for rides to school on time. Larger number of students on, per bus and longer ride times could result in additional discipline concerns for the drivers. And last, current rough draft of revised routes is based on current year enrollment. Next year's enrollment of kindergarten students could change. So these numbers were done with this year's numbers so that we would be moving the sixth graders out and then adding kindergarteners.
Well, and keeping in mind, we have a very large sixth-grade class this year. Do you have numbers for kindergarten enrollment at all?
Right now, we have a number of 73 for our incoming K, which typically at this point of the year is higher than normal. We're usually running around 50 to 60 at this time of year.
That was my question.
But 73 is a pretty, pretty good number for us to be at at this point.
So do you think we could get to like where we are now with our kindergarten class of 90 if we keep with the 72 right now? Like, how many people typically wait till the last minute to send their kid up for kindergarten?
It's, it's hard to predict, but usually over the summertime, we definitely do-
I mean, I was like a mom in Halifax. I have a kid in second grade and a kid in kindergarten. And I know it took me a hot minute to figure out how to register my kid for kindergarten. So it's like, I was one of those. So I was 73 or whatever I was, coming in on two wheels and registering my kid, so.
I mean, it's-
I don't think the enrollment's going to be low for kindergarten.
It's hard to predict, but typically over the summertime, we'll get anywhere between six and 10 easily additions over the, in the summer months.
So you said our current enrollment is 550 to 60?
It's 547 right now.
And we have how many buses?
Currently, we have 10.
I think the thing that Principal Bowdre specified too is that we do range, literally every student in the school has an assigned bus. One of the buses has 25 students on it. One of the buses has 73. I'm also looking at the bus routes. The shortest bus route is 16 minutes. The longest bus route is about 47 minutes. So I know it's not an exact science and I know the bus company has, you know, they have experts in money routes, but I certainly think they can be more efficient and make the numbers a little more equitable. I understand Halifax, you have a lot of cities, you know, a little bigger town, area-wise, but to have 16-minute route and a 47-minute route, it's not very equitable. So I think we can definitely work with the bus company on that. Will we reduce the buses or not?
It sounds like there's wiggle room there, which is-
But to have 25 kids on a bus?
No, we should, yeah.
Think about the taxpayer. There's more than half the bus that has students on it.
My kids are on bus 23. They get on the bus at 7:44 in the morning and they are the, if I drive by to go get a donkeys or something, they're the last one there. My kids don't complain. It's, they're used to it.
Sorry, so I'm just confused by the numbers. So did you say that currently our, if you were to take our student population and divide it by the buses, did you say we're at 71? Or is there, is there different buses, different capacity numbers?
We have 71 capacity and then there's at least one or possibly two buses that is 77.
So if we have, let's say that we have the same number of students next year. We have a big sixth-grade class, so let's say we have a big kid in our class. That means there would be 68 students per bus. If I do 547 divided by eight, that's 68. And the bus capacity is telling you that there are smaller buses, there are 71. So that's still three. And that's if every single kid takes the bus, which we know they do not.
Right.
I just want to make sure I personally have one up there as far as what I'm thinking about.
We just need to make sure that if we had some reason to put every child on a bus, then there is a seat for everybody.
Absolutely, yes, of course.
We didn't factor in, we do have students that are transported by vans and that number's not even on this, on this list here.
So we're still under what the, the bus tells us the maximum is. We're under that maximum and that's with real numbers. With, if there was an emergency and we had to evacuate the kids out of this town, every kid would have a seat?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
We're still under that number, right? That's my big concern. It's not about the day-to-day stuff. It's about, it'd be easy to get these children someplace, they cannot fit and that's, okay.
Absolutely.
Did you like?
Sean McKenzie. I, have you actually ever measured a bus seat? Because you're saying free to a seat. If you met and kids come in all shapes and sizes, so I'm looking at a bus seat, measuring it with their backpacks, their snow boots, instruments, whatever else they have, they're going to have literally less than a four, 12 inches to sit in. And in the event of an emergency, got rid of an active sugar or something, a symbol, you know, water main break or a gas line break, people are working and we have to bus these kids out in case of an emergency, are we going to be squabbling over 12 inches of space for our children to keep them safe? Just if we have to allot for a seat on every, of a bus for every child?
Well, according to the bus company, we do have enough room for every child.
And we don't have any concerns that kids come in different shapes and sizes and fitting, you know, and?
There's always concerns. The issue here is we need to make cuts somewhere. And the school committee and the school admins are trying to do the best we can keeping safety, academics, everything. And if the cuts don't come here, where would you like them from?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not-
Well, now I know, but that's, no, and I-
Even a child, I'm a school bus driver and also a mother in the town. My concern is I do have a child with ADD and it's difficult for him and I have other students on the bus as well, friends of his. I turn it all down, they get very oversimulated. I have probably between, I would say 45 and 55 riders depending on the people who are their dad's help, who are their mom's help, people have sports, parent pickup, dismissal appointments. So those numbers of how many kids are riding, it's changes day-to-day. I could have 20 kids one week, you know, one on Monday and 49 on Friday. It's very-
No, I-
And the noise. We have, you know, what's max capacity for our classroom? Is that 30 students?
Um, well-
But roughly, estimated, it would be 30 students.
It depends on the room, on how many students we can fit.
They also have the option to send to the principal if we have a behavioral issue. There is powers that we can have and to come and help out. You have one bus driver with now 71 children. While their, in their classroom or their school bus is moving, you know, we could be driving home, the snow could start at lunchtime. Now we're driving in hazardous conditions with 71 children on the bus. We have nobody there but us. We have a behavioral issue, what am I supposed to do in that sense? Turn around and go back to the school on a snowstorm?
Um, I-
Because I have nowhere to separate the children now because I have a max-capacity bus. Do you see what I'm saying?
Absolutely appreciate-
Or do I just let them roll back? Just?
I appreciate everything you're saying and we have incredibly difficult choices in front of us.
Absolutely.
And there's no way everyone's going to like the decisions made. And we've done a lot of research. The admins have done a lot of research. These are their recommendations. Other recommendations have been made, but weren't voted by the committee. So in this very difficult situation, we have done studies where we asked them to please go to the bus company and make sure this is a feasible, safe choice.
Have you been done a ride along on a half-full?
I've been on many field trips and I have four children.
And those are fun events and I love field trips. I'll take a sports trip or a field trip any day of the week. I love them.
No, I understand, but I have-
I'll have her home to school. When I have kids that are tired and overwhelmed and cranky and hungry or sick or whatever else and all different age groups. And it's very stressful, whether it's half-capacity, three-quarter, a quarter or a full capacity.
I know. I, I've driven around with my four kids in a minivan and I've always praised bus drivers because-
I would welcome you on my bus if you had any different-
Well, I, my children have all bust on these buses. I am fully aware of everything that can happen.
And you're, and you're not concerned about the more behavioral issues that we have with that many kids? We have to provide special transportation, like a special ban for students who cannot be on max-capacity bus. And according to IUPs, if they come up with a problem and we can't put these kids now with larger groups because they're causing such behavioral issues, then we now have to find funding to provide private special education transportation for these other students who cannot ride the bus at max capacity.
Well, we also have, um, I'm not sure- Well, we also have, um, I'm not sure what you're trying to have me say.
I'm asking for the kids that have extreme difficulties on the bus as it is with not max capacity. There, there are several children, yes, I don't know.
That's really a question I think you should direct to the principal since it's a behavior thing.
Do you have a situation if that comes up, if we have children who are already difficult, you know, having difficulties on the bus? Do we have somewhere that we can, a budget that we're going to fit in when we have, we need private transportation for these students who cannot physically be safe on the bus with a large capacity group?
Uh, well, there's a couple of pieces there. So if they're not behaving appropriately, then they could be removed from the bus. They may have to find other means of transportation. But if 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 they require alternative means, then that would have to be something that would go through the I U P process and that would be a team decision that they would make.
Okay, but a similar effort, we pull them down from the bus, give them over the space. I mean, some kids, it's not a negative behavioral thing. Sometimes it's just overstimulation and they're crying and they're scared and they're making movements because they're, it's a lot of them, these are little kids, first graders, kindergartners. Some of them are larger kids. You know, stop your kids is, I've had kids run off my bus because it's meant to laugh. And that's a cause for concern for me for adding more children on that bus with an already overcrowded bus.
I appreciate everything you're sharing and this has already been voted.
Yep.
And so I'm not sure this discussion is productive. I completely hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
Um, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I, can I just say something? I, I also appreciate classrooms have a really difficult job. But I would like to just maybe set some context for the crowd and anyone that's watching this. This is like the most recent of several conversations we've had about the budget. Probably whether it's a February meeting or a March meeting, we were advised of the situation we're in. It was very late in the game for us to make significant adjustments, go back to the town, telling the dire straits we were in. We are looking at a difficult problem. None of us want to make cuts. Our sister town Kingston, their school committee decided that they weren't going to make the cuts that they needed to make and they're going to lead up to the town to decide. In my opinion, that's not a responsible thing to do. Um, I would encourage everyone here that's a taxpayer to talk to your neighbors of funding education in this town. We need taxpayers to support our schools. There is only so much we can do. The last meeting, we, we had asked Mr. Bowdre, the administration, to give us some proposed cuts. We had a limited time to look at that before we needed to vote on what cuts. And we did as best we could, a line by line discussion. We only got to three hundred and eighty thousand and decided we, we just need to vote at all value because we can't figure out what to cut next. No one wants to cut these expenses. But we are relying on the expertise of the educators who trust to give us the advice of what they think is feasible and safe. And we listened to that the last time we're on, and still need to make cuts to staff, staff that none of us are happy with. But we need to find this money. I would encourage every person here to go to town meeting, to make their point, to tell the town that we need to fund education better. If it can't happen this year, the town needs to be prepared on the level of education that they are subjecting our kids to versus what the two other towns in our district have. So please understand I'm passionate about this. I raised two kids through the system. I've sat on many buses. Renting field trips different, but I would tell you after a field trip, they're a nightmare. So there isn't anyone here who hasn't ridden the bus. And I, you know, God bless you for what you do every day. God bless our teachers who are thinking every day. This is a tough situation and none of us wants to be there making it.
Yeah, she was going to be worse.
Can I just say? Then we need to fund education as well too. We need to get everybody careful about that.
Please do not speak out without being called on. Just, sorry, go ahead.
I'm Alina Arretino. Um, I, I, I watched the meeting that you had in town. And I feel for not only your decision, but for what's coming for these kids. My hope is that you have a contingency plan when these cuts do go through to support normally our bus drivers that are here, our teachers that are here. Um, we just need the support back if this is what it looks like. We need to also understand how to help our children and in a positive way going forward. Um, I think that's the best that we can do at the moment for us. I really appreciate all of you. Thank you. Um, and good luck. I'm looking forward to next year for anybody with a love for teachers. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Hi, it's all right. I would ask just a quick question before I do that. Thanks so much for all the time, all the years, teaching, and the listeners. I have a kid in daughter coming up in September and I appreciate everything you've done. The point is, I don't, I don't think I can write this book very well.
Lori, Lori Costa-Cline.
How did we get here?
I think we should have dressed out with our administration quite frankly. Because I got myself the same.
How long ago did you know that this is going to prevent us?
I knew in February.
The bus drivers spoke very ultimately, their points of value and sincere, maybe late in the game, but how did we get here?
Uh, the whole state is here, honestly.
Well, Lori just told us that two other towns in our districts were better served than we are now.
That's, that's my opinion. That's my opinion.
Okay, but as a school community member, you stated that. So that's your opinion. Where we are is where we are. We all have a concern here. That's why we're here.
I need to clarify what Ms. Klein was saying is, is that unfortunately for those towns that have decided that they're just going to run with the budgets as usual, those town taxpayers are going to have to even possibly do a proposition to and a half.
Oh, yeah.
They're going to have to. There's no way. In order for them to cover these costs, the taxpayers are going to pay. So we're in a, a tenuous situation here because we're also taxpayers. We want to make sure that we have a balanced budget that we're responsible for. And so we're trying our very best to meet the needs of our students, the, give our teachers the support that they need. Because as a teacher myself, I know just how much our teachers need in terms of support, not only from curriculum, but also from the administrators.
Sure.
But we also want to make sure first and foremost that these students are safe and that they're being cared for in the best way. So we are trying our very best to be responsible and balance all those things.
To be clear, I'm not being critical of anybody at the table, on any side of the administration or anybody involved in work. I'm simply asking if other positions in the town and boards are better positioned than apply over here? Not a criticism of any school elementary system or the administration or any other town board. I'm simply asking, we are where we are with a big meeting waiting for tonight, with tough decisions to be made, arguments to be had. Where are we off?
I'd like to clarify my statement to say that it was the vote of the elementary school for in Kingston, the Kingston School Committee, to not move, to not cut the budget as deeply as we're asking. They're putting it up to the.
They're putting, and it may not even pass over there. And so the.
Right. So if you guys declined to cut the budget, level service or otherwise, as the finance committee recommended, even though the chair granted more money on their side, fifty percent deficit on their versus the other town, we were still granted a deficit. We made cuts at the top. You guys all made cuts at the top, not, nobody like unilaterally, you know, unflattened over here. So whether the Kingston Elementary School recommended it or not, the Plumben, the Holden, anybody else did it, other towns would balance it through, but we're here facing the decisions that were made, which I commanded before, which were all difficult. Or to, or we declined, a town vote next week. So the alternative, correct? That's the alternative?
Um, we, we've already voted to get to pretty much where the town wants us. So we have to vote a little bit more to get where they've asked.
But if you had declined to make any additional cuts, the alternative would have been a town meeting today?
I guess so, yes.
I would like to address the statement made by Ms. Costa-Klein with regards to the budget and how did we get here. Since my name was mentioned, my position was mentioned, I'd like to clarify. Over the past two years, um, following COVID, uh, it became apparent to myself and members of a negotiating team that our special education programs at Kingston Elementary School were incorrectly structured for decades. Silver Lake did not exist as an elementary system. Silver Lake was a seven through twelve system. We were required by the Department of Education and by Massachusetts Regulation to address these issues. Over the past two years, these issues have been brought up to the school committee chairs. They have been brought up in subcommittee meetings. They have even been brought up to the, the towns and in public meetings with the towns. Most recently, the biggest public session related to the incorporation of pre-K into the regional agreement, in which we provided frequently asked questions as to how we got here and why we needed to address these issues. At the beginning of the budget cycle, which for us begins in January, we started the budget process by explaining the major movements that were going to have to take place in order to address these concerns. In addition, in working with the state, we noticed a number of other issues that had to be addressed. Namely, that out of district tuitions should never have been charged to the elementary school budgets for students in grades seven through twelve. Those tuitions and costs should have been charged directly to Silver Lake. The only exception to that is the out of district vocational. There's a special regulation for that and that remains with the elementary schools. We are a very complicated, partially regionalized school district with one business director who worked day and night in her new position along with the rest of this administrative staff to continually update these budgets and provide updates to this school committee as regularly as possible, recognizing that we serve four separate and distinct financial entities and four separate and distinct, um, districts as a whole. So, um, that's how we got there. There's a lot of documentation on our website from the meetings that we've participated in. Our meetings are also recorded. You can hear our conversations over the past two years. And again, I'm, I'm shouting so that you can hear me, not because I'm upset with you.
Um, I, I feel like I, I, we should close comments so we can move on with our meeting because I appreciate the inputs and I know we all have lots of questions and do not want to be in this position. But decisions have to be made so that our town can function and so that our kids can get the best education possible and in the safest way possible. So. Is, are you done with your?
We are complete, yes.
Yes. Okay, so back to, I think where my question is, so I was thinking of the original, we cut to three eighty, which was actually three sixty three, but you're adding in the ninety three thousand, which was kind of part of what we talked about when we went to the town as part. So putting that in with the five hundred thousand that we originally voted to, like, as you're earmarking it when it wasn't earmarked before in the five hundred thousand. So my question is, in my conversations with the town after the, um, financial committee meeting that we had, um, they wanted us to cut fifty thousand more above the five hundred thousand we already voted to cut. That, that was my understanding of what the request was.
We, Superintendent Prue and I had a, an email from the town manager. And what the town manager said in the email is that the town, the finance committee, he felt would support a budget of six million, eight hundred, twenty two thousand, one hundred, thirty eight dollars, which is six hundred and forty three thousand dollars and less than the level service budget that we started our April first meeting with. So that's why at the beginning of this meeting, I had said that, if you go back in the slideshow, that there's an additional hundred and forty three thousand that the town is looking for reductions so that the finance committee at town meeting could support the school committee budget.
Okay, so that, that makes sense where that's coming from. And we have to vote on that additional hundred and forty three thousand or because of the?
So after getting that number from the town, Superintendent Prue, the school administration, Principal Bowdre, we all worked to come up with potential scenarios for the school committee to consider, which is that slide eleven that you had up there with the highlights. So if you look at that slide eleven, the, the five hundred thousand dollars was already voted in April.
Right.
And then the additional fifty thousand dollars in the yellow. I'm sorry, I'm looking at it. I don't know what colors it is over there.
Okay.
And then, um, and then an additional ninety seven thousand, five hundred in the red at the bottom. So if the school committee were to vote the reductions that are in yellow and red, then the school committee would be presenting the town meeting with a budget that the FinCom would support.
I still don't understand. I'm not seeing much higher than what we talked about before. But I, I just, I'm not following them out. So you're, you're saying we should cut our agenda stage to get to our budget.
Yes.
So that's, that's where I was confused too, because I was thinking the ninety three thousand obviously wasn't found money. It was money we had budgeted that we no longer needed to because we only had two vocational placements instead of the five we budgeted or four we budgeted for. And, um, so that was part of like, part of the found money, like I thought it was going, I thought it was going into the five hundred thousand we already had voted on.
And that's why it's up there in green.
But then I thought beyond the five hundred we already voted, that, um, it was, and then the negotiation was another fifty beyond that. But I guess I misunderstood the conversation or, I don't know. So we need to cut an additional, um, hundred and forty seven thousand, well, to the hundred and forty three thousand in order to meet what the town is requesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Green is on the left.
The green is, well, we have, I mean, I don't think we voted on these specific lines in the green.
We do.
Yeah.
Should we start by, should we do color by color this way? And you can go that way?
I'd like to ask your question. So if we do that, I'd like to know what happens if we do not follow FinCom's recommendation? What happens if we will change it?
If we do that and we risk our school, we risk the town not passing the budget, then we have only a certain amount of time to have a budget before the state will take over and then none of us have any say in what happens in our schools. So it's a dangerous game to play. I mean.
So I'm going to just ask some kind of other questions and it's for the benefit of my own understanding, but also questions I anticipate folks may also have. What would happen if on town meeting four, if we present a budget that's not the recommendation FinCom? And on town meeting four, a taxpayer makes a motion to add X amount of money to the budget to get us where we think is reasonable and then the town votes to approve that?
It would mean that the money would have to come from somewhere else in the town. They'd have to cut somewhere else.
And those would be additional cuts?
To other departments.
To other, over and above what other departments have already made?
Correct. I've just been putting that out there because I think it's important for people to know the limits of what we can actually do at this point.
I wasn't saying let's cut green right away. I was saying let's talk about green and then we can take it color by color and instead of looking at this whole big thing saying six hundred and forty seven thousand.
Absolutely.
I think we should talk about it by color, ask questions about it that way and then.
Okay.
Bus fees still, is that not an option or kindergarten tuition or? I know we had thrown that around last time.
In order for us to charge bus fees, we would have to have a revolving account that's set up by the town. And the revolving account would have to be approved at town meeting, which means it would have had to go on the warrant a month ago in order to create the account to collect the fees.
So can we put this on for next year? Can we like make note of this for next year to talk about that?
We can potentially look at it next year. And again, that situation, just to make clear, right? If someone receives free and reduced lunches, then they would not have to pay the bus fee because as I stated last time, I don't want it to be a challenge for anyone to get their child to school. And...
Also, just because they're not paying for the bus doesn't mean they can't get on the bus in an emergency. We still have to have a seat for everybody.
Yep.
For all those questions.
Do you have other questions?
I am curious, I know we already voted on it, but is there, have we asked our student if we can eliminate one bus and where that gets us instead of two? I know that we've already made the vote, but it is something that has been kicking in my head tonight. So we ask that of our students?
So the original conversation that I had with first student, if you, if you look at how bus companies route, it's easier for them to take their routes from the previous year feeding into the computer program and make adjustments on the fly. I asked them to start from scratch, to take the addresses of the students and start from scratch as if Halifax were a new district and a new contract for the company. And I asked them, can you route the dis, can you route Halifax Elementary School with eight buses? And they did come back to us with a map with new routes, which looked different than previous years. So a road that was on with another road this year might be not on the same road next year. So they gave us a summary slide, and then I asked them specifically to give the actual routes. What bus, what stops, what kids? And then Principal Bowdre and Superintendent Prue and I met and went through each bus and with a map saying, okay, it starts here, it goes here, and going through that. So the bus company, given the task of seeing if eight buses were possible, came back with yes, eight buses was possible. So I would assume nine buses would work also.
And also, I guess you're asking what the savings would be, which it would be half.
Going half the savings, I understand that, but would maybe we got to make that someplace else?
And in this new route that you're showing here, are the buses more of the same amount of time? Because you were saying, Mr. DeSantis, that some bus routes are 15 minutes right now and some are 45. Does, what does this do to the average time of the bus route?
So looking, uh, hold on, there, one sec. So looking at this proposal that the bus company gave us, we have, this is the largest runtime, the total time of 35 minutes. And the smallest was, there, is 23 minutes.
So it really, I mean, it kind of makes more, you know, it's something that I think we could have done anyway, right? Like revamped the bus routes just given where our population is.
If you look at the current numbers, let's just say that 10 buses are currently have. We have 550 students. We have 65 to 70 percent. We have 30 YMCA students. So let's say 100 students on a bus. So now you're down to 450. If you got 10 buses, let's just say it was equitable, 45 on each bus. If you went down to nine buses, you're looking at probably above 58 on each bus. You go down to eight, excuse me, if you go down to nine buses, I think we're at 51 on each bus. If you go down to eight buses, you're going to be around 58. Like I said, it's not going to work out perfectly, but I think we're, if we, during our emergency, I think yes, we have the capacity on eight buses. Like if we go eight, nine to 10, it ranges between 45, 51, 58 students. Currently, based off on how many drop-offs and pickups we get in our YMCA.
Right.
And that isn't accounting for all of our school programs that we do out throughout. You know, I can't, like, give a day in between sessions, but I can say pretty consistently, a hundred students do not buy a bus and go every day.
Oh, that's helpful.
Yeah.
If I could just address the, in the emergency piece, because that's come up a couple times. If there were a catastrophic emergency here in Halifax, Silver Lake contracts with first student, and we have 31 buses. 10 of them do home-to-school in Halifax. If there were an emergency in the middle of the day and Halifax needed to evacuate, there's 31 buses available to us. So I don't think that should be a consideration, the emergency piece.
And in an emergency, the kids, I'm hoping they're not going to try to swoop their backpacks and their instruments to get on the bus.
Correct.
Oh, that's a very good point.
Thank you.
And right now, this is just a preliminary draft that they, the bus company has submitted to us. So we're going to go through this and kind of poke holes in it because there are areas that Sarah and I were picking up when we were looking at it. And Jill, when we looked at it, that there's certain buses that may be able to drop a part of its route and it could be picked up on some of the other ones. Just seeing, because there's a lot of overlap. If you're seeing, like in this section here, it's almost like you have like three or four buses that are on top of each other. So we're going to go through it and we're going to give the bus company some feedback.
Well, and so some of the buses right now might actually, that are more crowded now, might end up with less students in this scenario. So it's not, I mean, it sounds like we could have used this to revamp anyway.
Yeah. Have you ever been stuck on I'm bar number 23 on Elm Street? It's my son's bus.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion?
Are we recording on all of the, is it green or is it colored first?
Right.
So can I ask about supply lines to sort of the teaching? What are we talking about? Is that actually?
And that's in addition to the 93,000 we voted last time, correct?
Yes.
So you found some more? Or we're going to go without some more?
That is what we're looking at, yes. And we had to find ways to cut, and that's where we ended up going, so.
Yes?
Just speaking to that question, Tom, I thought the joint meeting between the selectmen and the finance committee and the school committee there, there was a gap of 120,000. I believe that's right. And I believe the chair of the finance committee said they'd pick up 70, and the school committee was responsible for around 50. But speaking to the director over here, I think there was some found money for it. Can we do the math again on that? Because I think there's some confusion up there about the math might be what we're looking for, correct?
So part of the confusion is that the level service budget that was presented in January?
In October.
January.
Time administrator asked about October for level service budget.
I, I apologize, I started working here on Thanksgiving. And our first budget hearing was January 1st. January 2nd, sorry. So the level service budget that was presented on January 2nd was different because it needed revisions from the February budget, which is different from the March budget. So the April 1st budget that was presented was the final level service budget for the school committee to consider. That budget was $7,465,138.
Okay, so how much were we looking for at that time? It was 500?
I don't have that in front, no, it was not 500. If we go back to the previous presentation from the April meeting, there were multiple tiers of cuts and the school committee chose to cut only 500.
We were asked to cut more, we didn't cut the full amount.
Right, and was it a reflection of the finance committee chair admitting agreement to take more than 50% of the difference at that time, when money was quote unquote filed to support the school committee? So we did the version of shortcuts? Maybe remember that?
No.
Okay, that's fine. I'm under, I'm under memory. Listen, you guys all have the thank you shop, you're all doing the job for me. And I appreciate all of it. I'm just, I'm just suggesting that there appeared to be some sort of solution in the middle or toward the school committee's ground at that joint meeting, where the finance committee chair agreed to take more than 50% of the deficit. And now you're saying even more money in line of being quote unquote filed due to the out-of-district placement?
That is not correct. The out-of-district placement was discussed.
$26,000 per student, correct?
I'm sorry?
Was it $26,000 per student?
For the vocational, out-of-district vocational tuition.
And there was less than two and a half of the budget at that meeting.
Correct.
So there should be some important focus right there.
And then there was a follow-up email from the town manager the next day that said that he felt that the FinCom would support a budget of $6,822,138.
But not at the public meeting?
I don't rec, I, I think we were... I've been to a lot of meetings. There was another FinCom meeting just a week and O tonight.
There, there was discussion over email about what would, what meeting in the middle meant.
Right, at that meeting, the FinCom chair suggested more than 50% burden on the remainder of the town budget and not 100% burden on the school committee's budget. At that meeting? Yes?
Well, I, I mean, I... My understanding was we discussed that we got the, you know, we told them we had cut. They asked us originally to cut about 700 and something thousand. So I think maybe where we were meeting halfway was we're not going all the way up to that 700,000? So that's because now we're at 647, and that's where we're meeting the halfway. Because, you know, we asked them if we could not do that entire amount. And I can understand, because I, anyway, I was having a hard time too. Anyway, all right, so discussion?
So I have questions about the support staff reduction. So the first support staff reduction, I feel like this is a power of position, am I accurate? So even though it says 25,000, as you were saying earlier, Sarah, that could actually be a lower amount depending on which?
If you look at the presentation from April, 28,000 was the number that was used.
Okay, so 25 is a better?
25 is a better estimate.
Okay. So that's, how many powers have we cut at this point from our original budget? So this will be like the third power?
Peyton, I'm going to have to ask you that.
This would be the third.
The third.
And then, I know we're supposed to just be talking about green.
I think you can talk about all of it.
Okay. I'm trying to move on to yellow.
Okay.
Support staff production, I have. Is that also a power?
Yes.
So we're losing three and a half?
Correct.
And currently, the powers that we have, the power professionals, are all full-time?
Yes.
Okay, so someone would have to work?
We have 17.
I'm sorry?
17, right, we have 17?
17, yes.
17 before the cuts, but how many are in the D E L? Is that?
D E L, six.
C C E?
Six, right.
There's six for plants for the D E L C for next year.
Yeah, I know, I had the wrong acronym.
Wait, I'm sorry. I thought Mr. Bowdre in your email with the request for information that I sent, I thought, you said there was 12 in the, 12 educational areas, not in the D E L C.
It is five issues.
It's five.
Five D E L C plus 12, academic inclusion, 17.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Five D E L C powers this year plus 12 inclusion, academic, equals 17 powers this year.
And then we're, next year, we're increasing our enrollment in our D E L C programs.
So how many are going to be in D E L C next year?
So we're looking at three and three. So the six, six total D E L C powers.
So we're losing one para to the D E L C, right? From what we have now, so that's 11 available to us next year?
Yes.
Plus we cut two, so now we're down to nine. And now you want us to cut, your suggestion is to cut, not you want to, sorry, but your suggested proposed reductions is another one and a half?
Correct.
So we have?
Seven and a half?
So...
That's so, that's one per grade, correct?
So we're down to seven and a half pares. And when you talk about classrooms that need pares per I E Ps, if, so if there's three kindergarten classrooms, and I'm not trying to yell at you, I'm trying to figure stuff out. So if there's three kindergarten classrooms that have para support, one para can do that because of the time requirements in the I E Ps, is that correct? So you don't need three pares per grade, obviously.
Correct.
Right, so it works out that you would have one para to service. I don't even know how you do it, but there, one para services, services all three of the kindergarten grades? And they have enough time and they're scheduled to meet all the minutes in the I E Ps?
Well, moving into next year, we would have to be more thoughtful instead of spreading students that are on I E Ps across all three or four classrooms. And we would need to place them in one or two classrooms moving into next year so that we can actually service those I E Ps in those rooms.
Will that cause any problems with, then are we getting into like substantially different?
As long as we stay under the 50% for the students enrolled in that classroom.
Okay. So we're, is it going to be an issue with the number of I E Ps that we have?
The way that we, we planned it out, that we should definitely be within our capacity to do that.
Okay.
So can I ask one question?
Of course, yeah.
So the behaviorist positioning, and that was something that was discussed a lot, the capacity of the workload that that person has in terms of the number of students that we, that person versus other staff. Case of, if you will, of students.
Can you speak up, Lori, sorry?
Sorry, sorry. So I know there was discussion about the number of students that the behaviorist actually touches versus some of our other teaching staff. And, you know, rather than cut from our frontline teaching staff or support staff, maybe we should consider this position. So I see that it, a reduction of 0.5.
Correct.
So again, currently that's a full-time employee.
It's full-time, yes.
So just to talk this through, there is a possibility that the person in that role may not feasibly be able to support themselves on half a salary and may need to, we could potentially lose that particular employee. That's, that's a risk.
We could lose anybody.
When you cut from four to half, right?
Correct.
So the other question I have specifically about this position is, if we are making this cut this year, my concern is precedence that sometimes, and this is just my recollection from budget years past, sometimes we've eliminated positions, like I think at one point in time, we didn't have a library for a while. Maybe I'm wrong, I'm misremembering. But it took us a while to get to a point where we could present that, to add that back into the budget. Do you foresee that being an issue next year? You know, if we realize we really needed that at a full-time level, do you foresee that being an issue to try to go back to the town and make a case for keeping that position? I know I'm asking you.
Right, I actually don't have a lot to expect for next year.
I think it's important to remember that Principal Bowdre presented a budget in January that he felt would best serve his school and the community. With feedback from the community in particular and through discussions here at school committee, he has worked to try to provide you with reductions that he thinks would have the least amount of impact to student well-being. he thinks would have the least amount of impact to student well-being and student education. He also heard some of your concerns about the behaviorist position last time, and you'll notice here, he reduced that just to point five as opposed to a full one point oh F T E. So, I'd just like to remind, because sometimes it, it begins to feel like Principal Bowdre thinks these are, this is a great idea, and that's, that's-
No, that's not an implication at all. I'm just trying to ask the question. So I've just had a month to think through everything that's discussed. I'm sorry, I've had a month to think through everything we discussed. I was adamantly like, no, we need a behaviorist, but I actually did listen to the, the audience last week and their, you know, feedback and their, you know, firsthand experience and, you know, that's the job of this role is to listen, take input, and try to make an educated decision. So I'm just asking some follow-up questions. I don't know, I feel swayed at this point that point five is a reasonable, you know, proposal. My, my question is really like, does that mean we're gonna have a tough time if we wanna try to bring that back to a full-time position in the future? And again, I don't think you have an answer for that.
And that's sort of up to us too as a school committee, if we feel it's important and, well, it's all important. But what is the most necessity? I mean, I'm thinking now of teachers having, if you have two classes that are basically inclusion classrooms where we had moved to a model where everybody was an inclusion classroom, is that going to lead to thoughts of, well, I don't want my kids in a class where they might not get as much attention? Or, you know, I'm, I'm, I just, there's no way that we can execute on this without, we, none of us have a crystal ball. We don't know what the fallout is, but, and every, every time we bring up one thing, it brings up a hundred other concerns. And that's, and trying to weigh it all out is really challenging. Karen?
So, just back to Dr., what Dr. Prue was starting to say, I would just appreciate if we could take a step back and hear the rationale of, so we had proposed reductions at H T S at our last meeting, and what you gave us tonight is titled additional proposed, but I feel like it's revised slash additional proposed. So, I was just wondering if you could give us that rationale because there's changes, right? So, I guess you don't have to go through everyone, I quickly did that myself here, but the big things that I'm seeing that are different from what you proposed at our last meeting is that instead of one full-time support staff, now reduce that to a point five. And you reduced the behaviorist to point five instead of, you know, fully eliminating that position. And then, on the other one, there was, on the tier three, there was a one classroom teacher which no longer is here. And I'm not sure how, the math, I didn't do the math, but, so I guess I was just wondering about the rationale. So, what your changes were and what the rationale was, if we could just do that, or is from the before and after?
Really, it was just kind of looking at the big picture of all the areas that we needed to cut. And we're trying not to go after personnel as much as humanly possible. And we have, our budget is only so big that we do need to get to the point where, you know, if, if you're voting on it, that we have to get to personnel. So when we're looking at that, we kind of sit down and we start writing the numbers of, you know, how many staff that we have here in the building? How many students that we have on I E Ps that we have to factor in? How many students are being serviced by that, by that population? So when we started to calculate where, you know, the ratios were, we were looking at, you know, numbers for the caseloads for all those areas. When we're looking at, when you break down a hundred and thirty I E Ps that we have in the building, we would break that down even further to how many specialized teachers we have, how many speech pathologists we have, how many paraprofessionals that we have, how many crisis team members we have, including adjustment counselor, school psych, behaviorist. And then when we factored that all in and we looked at the caseloads, they were very manageable when we, when we did it this way. And still keeping the class sizes at a reasonable amount is what we were looking at. So if you, if you take out the, you know, the enrollment of five hundred and forty-seven students, you know, the hundred and thirty students that are on I E Ps, and you, that number actually is a little less daunting when you go through it and calculate students that are in the D E L C program that are serviced by those specialized teachers, students that have safe speech-only I E Ps, and then we calculate all the different support staff that we have. So it's really where we came up with this. I mean, obviously, we don't wanna get to a, to yellow or red, but we're asked to make those cuts if we need to cut to that point.
What is the difference between the behaviorist, and this might have been answered last time, between the behaviorist and the school psych? Can the school psych pick up some of what the point five of behaviorist is?
Uh, yes. So the crisis team is myself, Brian, the adjustment counselor, the school psych, and the behaviorist. So, right now, our school psych doesn't have as large a caseload as the behaviorists, but chairs all I E P meetings that happen throughout the year. So we just said there's a hundred and thirty I E Ps that happen, so-
Can only the school psych do that for the I E Ps?
No.
Can other people, other people can help with the I E Ps?
Well, it's, I mean, I, I can chair those meetings, Brian can chair those meetings.
Well, the question, the question is, is that the teachers and the other schools do the annuals, and the school psychologists only do the initials in three-year reabouts. So his caseload would be less than a hundred and thirty.
Okay, so, so the answer basically is yes, that the school psych can take on that point five behaviorist. So we're not doing our children an injustice by getting rid of the behaviorist point five?
Correct, I mean, that would, obviously, it would need to be picked up somewhere. And so between myself, Brian, the school psych, the adjustment counselor, we would have to be able to kind of step up and carry that caseload.
Well, it says the impact could be initial P Ds, is that something that, it's pay P D or just on the in-service dates P D?
We would be looking at providing our staff with more, more professional development in managing those types of behaviors so that they could address them in tier one instruction.
So what would the cost be?
I don't have a dollar mark on it, yeah.
Well, I mean, going to guess, it's probably about equal to a point five behaviorist position.
So, the Department of Education at the federal level gives us what we call the Irish Center at Vanderbilt University. It's all research-based modules that are driven. Three of them are about behavior management, one, two, and three, and they're really very good. So I would think that you would, could utilize that behavior management during, modules during either team meeting times for the grade levels or after school, when the students are here, it's just as good as anybody coming in, and I can support as well. I've delivered professional development.
So that would be a yellow P D? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Discussion, yeah, okay, go ahead, no, it's fine.
If we have twelve educational pares right now, moving to seven point five, on paper, it works. But what were, what were the other educational pares doing? Just more support in the room and the classrooms? So we're just taking more pares out of those gen N classrooms because we're gonna consolidate? And with more I E Ps per, sort of, ratio of I E Ps is gonna be higher?
Correct.
Per gen N? Can you tell more about the reading specialist? Like, there was a, the-
Right.
The one full-time reading specialist, so there won't be a reading specialist?
We have two currently.
Okay, so, this package of information that we have for the bridge to a number of students in these, you know, additional support positions, and the reading specialist, it says that sixty-five to seventy-five students utilize or are supported by reading specialists. So what will that do to that one reading specialist case, or is that imaginable? Now, is there any additional support? Because again, I'm assuming if your kid might continue reading support, so I'd imagine it's, it's something that's necessary, you know, for a lot of kids.
Right, I mean, it's obviously not ideal to, to lose another reading specialist, but right now, we have one math specialist and that person is responsible for a similar caseload, but we have to prioritize students that need it the most and then complement.
And I just wanna make a note that I see that in the thread, the suggestion of reducing a specialist to point nine is in here, and that was something that was in tier one last time around. We didn't vote that far. I think everyone, you know, I received an email from Mr. Reese with additional addresses, an address from him about how, what his program looks like, what would be adopted by that change. And in kind, each of the other specialists, Mr. Troy, Mrs. Lassard, Ms. Tebow. Thank you. So, and a lot of the things that were mentioned, one of them was chorus, one of them was health, instrumental instruction, I think we talked about that last time. But there was also a lot of the hallmarks of Halifax, I would say, that are traditions, you know.
Turkey trot?
Right, I'm trying to, they're basically the extra pieces that enrich each of those specialist area of expertise. And it would put a serious limit on their ability to do those functions. So, I just wanted to thank each of the specialists that are here and aren't here for taking the time to outline that information for us. I don't think any of us wants to reduce your hours. And certainly, we all value your commitment to the school and the enrichment that you bring our kids. And continue to, I mean, my kids still talk very fondly about any of you. And they're about, they're almost all out of the school system. So, I, I, I'm glad to see that, you know, things like chorus and instrumental option and health are made. I hope that we, as a community, can find a way to support those other pieces, if this is what we're voting on today, to support the teachers and our students to help keep those health as hallmarks, if you will. And I hope that this is a one-year measure. I don't know, I mean, I truly, when we talk about master's budget, I'm pretty firm that we need to bring those people back to one.
I agree.
Is there still time in their schedule at a point nine to do things like the turkey trot and all those things, from a point one to a point nine?
We'd have to work with them.
Mrs. Lassard?
So I, I used to just have to do instrumental as a point nine, I didn't have time to do instrumental. As a full point, one point oh, it would still be compromised as to what it was a share, because it would be, it was a point four.
Right.
If you put it into a, but as a point nine, that would be, oh, it's too little, okay.
Thank you for clarifying. So, Dr. Prue, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I think this might be an example of kind of what I was getting at, that I don't know that Dennett and Kingston are necessarily going to be making the same changes for their music program that we will have to make. I just-
No, the, the school committee has not voted to eliminate instrumental at, in Kingston, nor in Halifax. However, I remain concerned that instrumental will remain at Dennett, because as you know, most people are looking for a full-time position. This position was a split position between Halifax and Dennett. In addition, instrumental, instrumental lessons are a research-based and proven way to help students improve, grow, feel connected socially, emotionally, but also academically. So, the, the reduction of the twenty-six thousand for instrumental that has already been voted is a, obviously, you know, one of many things that we will, we will be losing next year.
I think I have other questions.
Does anyone else have questions?
With the acts, with the removal of a reading specialist, is there a plan for P D for our teachers in science of reading? So that they can help do small group intervention to fill that gap within the classroom tier one?
We can look to do that, absolutely, we can work with our curriculum coordinator to add that in.
So I know that we've gone over this a million different ways and had pretty robust discussions. And I'd like to ask Dr. Prue and Mr. Bowdre and Mr. DeSantis, given the situation we're in, which is not ideal, what you've presented to us is what you feel like is the best way to preserve education and safety at our schools?
I go first? I, I absolutely do.
Okay.
I, I obviously don't wanna go to that part, point, and I thought, you know, there might be some other creative ways to come up with some, some funding, but, or even go back to the town, I don't know. Given, given what was asked for Brian and I, I think we really did do the best that we possibly could here, and we put students first ultimately, and that's, that was the task, but it was difficult and I dreaded it, and I still lose sleep about, you know, just looking at it, but that's what we had to do.
I, I would just add, I'm concerned about the reductions, but I don't see an alternative that would be any better. So, we spent a lot of time debating, discussing, thinking about different iterations that may not have as big of an impact. To say that this isn't going to have an impact on Halifax Elementary would be wrong, it is, it's going to have an impact. But I, 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 he's, we're pretty lean in every area that isn't personnel. Or isn't a contractual obligation of some sort. And, uh, things such as utilities, schools just like the community is impacted by inflation. So how did this happen? Well, it's been happening. And like many schools in the Commonwealth, here we are, everything is more expensive.
Did you wanna add anything, Mr. DeSantis, or?
Great.
Can we say we vote on all these things? Can we go to the town and say, we voted five hundred? And then they say, no, okay, well, we have a five fifty, can they, can we do it that way?
Um-
Like we like have the six forty-seven, we have it, I don't wanna cut it, will you just accept the five hundred? Can we like do it, you know what I mean?
Anyone can make a motion on town floor, but then they would have to find the money somewhere else. So then you would have to adjust somewhere else, and, I mean, it's-
Okay, we're gonna ask just-
Yeah, like, can we like, you know, like, sure, approve this right now, we'll vote it in so that we have the power to do it, but can we like, what time we do it? And it's cutting back on something like the reading specialist or the behaviorist. And is cutting back on something like the reading specialist or the behaviorist position or any of the support staff, is that going to lead us to have to hire contracted services? Or are we already doing that to have to get to where we need IEPs, things like that?
It's always going to depend upon the individual students and the individual student's needs. So, again, that's a, that's a difficult question for us. Any, any number of changes are, are going to negatively impact or could negatively impact students. So, again, we, we don't know what the students' needs are. That's a team process that determines that.
And I think one takeaway we can take from this year is what we're going to look for next year and start, you know, I know we started early, but we have a much better picture. We didn't know how regionalizing pre-K would look to our budget. We didn't know what the assessments would change, how they would change. There was a lot of unknowns. And in going into next year and working with the town, we can let them know what we've had to do in order to, you know, not impact other town services. I mean, education's very important, but I, and also there's state funding issues. There's, there's so many things that go into our budget that isn't just the Halifax, you know, there's a lot. And so, I feel like using this as a learning experience, as a school committee, because if we can get back, that's what we want to do. And so, you know, to figure out, work with the town. I, I know, like, there's discussion of a Prop two and a half override for next year. Maybe that, you know, things like that and explain, this is what we had to do this year and this is what we don't want to have to do again. And in fact, we'd like to restore things that we had to take away.
Yeah, I just, Dr. Prue, I think that this would challenge for any school committee. I mean, saying it's a learning experience for us, it's true, we're learning, but I don't know that any school committee could have necessarily handled this differently.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm just saying that like for the future, yeah.
Like, I feel like that leaves folks with the thought that like, if we had different people at the table, they would have been able to figure it out better.
Oh, yeah.
When we're talking about people's lives, because I don't want us to be the community with the idea that we're learning at the expense of somebody's, like, living.
Okay. Yeah. No, no, that makes sense. No, and I mean it more as experience, as instruction, as a learning experience, like going through, because you're right. I mean, this hasn't happened before, but I see what you're saying.
And I think just to clarify, we really did have choice on regionalization. That was, I mean, yes, we get to vote on it, but there could have been some severe ramifications had we not did.
Well, and if we didn't, it would have been more expensive for Halifax because we would have had to send all of our pre-K students to out-of-district placements, which would have been a lot more money. So, all of our pre-K students who qualified, qualify, which is absolutely necessary, but there's, you know, there, there are a lot to this and we've been talking about it for months and we don't mean to, you know, we want to answer questions as fully as we can, but we've been in this for a long time. So.
I don't know that we really fully understood either, at least I didn't, like, the impact that would happen and that has to do with all the end. Like, we knew that we would see at the Halifax level, we would see reduction, but that's a late, we'd see an increase. And I think our thought process was, oh, they'll just wash, it'll be a slight increase. I don't think anyone anticipated that it would blow up the way it did. And I don't think it's just the regionalization. I think it's cost of living, other expenses. I think it's the increased number of students that need specialty education services. And I'm saying this mostly for Dr. Prue and for Sarah, to the current, time and time again, it's not one thing.
And it's not just our town. Yeah. And it's not just, and sorry, I mean to talk, but it's not just our town. You read articles of like, many school districts are facing these issues and it's really, really difficult. So, anyway, all right. Karen?
So, I just wanted to give my perspective and also gain some clarification at the same time in talking about what we need to very soon accomplish. So, we have a confirmed retirement. So, in my opinion, if we were to cut one classroom teacher position, it wouldn't be helped by anybody. The position would not be replaced. So, it's a position that's not attached to a person. So, a human being doesn't feel it. And if you did that to this year's grade four, which would be next year's grade five, oh, worse. Their class size would still be smaller than other class sizes. However, it's irrelevant because all we would be voting on is cutting the line. And administration would be privy to do whatever they want with that number. So, to me, I feel like a classroom teacher is leaving and you don't replace that classroom teacher, nobody, no human being loses a position. Class size is still lower than other class sizes and we preserve the specialist, the reading specialist, we keep whole, all of our other specialists. But again, that's not something we can vote on, so I just want to clarify that, make sure that I'm clear. I also, I'm not personally comfortable with taking away the support staff, both the parents and the behaviorists, because those people can service all kids, all kids eight through six. We need somebody here and now, in this moment, they can be moved at will. It's not a classroom teacher that's assigned to a certain roster and specific walls in the building. So, I personally feel that it's really important to keep those parents that can be moved and to keep their behaviorists that can go and de-escalate a child. If you look at the list of their responsibilities, caseload of thirty students, they also are included on the service delivery for IEPs. So, I feel that's a slippery slope with making sure legally that we're servicing all those IEPs. So, that's how I feel as far as the cuts go. I don't want to see the reading specialist have either. I think that's important to get ahead of IEPs. Just a last name and spoke about that in our last meeting. But again, that's not something that we're voting on. So, I guess, I want to clarify when we vote to, like, as we vote through, we're voting colors, are we also addressing line items as well? So, I guess I'm confused about making sure we're clear on exactly what we're voting on when we vote.
Can I ask who the, there was one confirmed retirement that I knew about in December, which was Mrs. Tenelli, and that has been factored into the budget. Is there an additional retirement?
Yeah. So, that's the confirmed retirement in time, right? So, there's one less classroom teacher in the building. Like, we just talked about.
So, that was known prior to the.
Yeah. I'm not talking money though, I'm talking like positions, right? So, if.
Right.
So, I, I feel like if they just don't create, if instead of this money that we have, we allocate to others, rather than hiring a new classroom teacher, that's what I was.
I just wanted to mention that.
That's for FY twenty-six.
Thirty-nine thousand, what is FY twenty-six?
Isn't she not retiring this year? She's retiring.
She's not retiring until the end of next year.
She's not retiring. So, do we have?
Do we have another budget problem then?
Because we switched it to thirty-nine thousand, right? A savings of thirty-nine thousand.
So, that, the savings of, the information that I have says that she's retiring on June thirtieth, twenty, twenty-five.
So, we don't, so, so you didn't, not, I'm just concerned now that we're another shortage with, with the shortage.
Nice.
Well, we're working on this year twenty-fifth budget, correct? So, she's retiring at the end of twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, that's right.
Which is a twenty-six.
Yeah. We're fine. But that does.
But that's something we can think about next year.
Yes.
Yes.
But anyway, it's irrelevant because we do not make those decisions. So, I just want to make sure that it's clear too. So, right, because we would just vote on that line, which is all HTA.
It is all, well, the, the support staff is not HTA. I don't think we've, the reading specialist is HTA though, correct?
Yes.
So, that will be a reduction at the HTA line item.
Is the behaviorist HTA?
Yes.
No, no. And maybe I received that the behaviorist is not HTA.
I think you're talking about two certain, two different things. There's the line item and what it's called, and then there's, then there's membership in the Halifax Teachers Association.
Yeah. Well, I'm talking about the line item.
Two separate things.
The reading specialist is in the teacher line item. The behaviorist is not in that.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yes, right. That's what my understanding is what Mr. DeSantis just said. So, the behaviorists would be on their own line item to be voted on to be cut. The support staff would be on their own line item to be cut. And then also the librarian would not be part of the specialist reduction because the librarian is on her own line item. So, we'd have to vote separately. If we're going to make all specialists go to point nine, we would have to vote separately for the librarian to also be cut to point nine because she is not on the same line item.
My understanding though is that we don't have to vote on line items because the administration has line item authority.
Autonomy.
We want to see eliminated for a total budget and, and, but, the voter could decide after when we're going to shift some things. Am I, am I not, you have line item authority?
So, generally speaking, we value the, from our school committee, and we present to you what it would look like if you were to make these cuts, what we would propose to do. So, basically, if you, you vote this, our intention is to reduce those line items by those amounts.
So, we're more, we're actually voting on these levels rather than necessarily line items?
Yes. And yes, historically, you have voted a, a budget number.
And, yeah. I was going to say, historically, we have done a budget number and let, have allowed the admins to work the budget out within that number. The school committee, I believe, and tell me if I'm wrong, does have the ability to vote down certain, you know, to reduce or change line items, but there would still be wiggle room with, I mean, because there's so many people on the teacher, even if they're members of the HTA, but like, on the teacher's salary line, you know, there's so many people there that it might not, you know, it's, it's.
Might not be the exact position we envisioned, correct? Right. And if I'm wrong to say that there is a possibility that maybe, you know, this is like a crazy idea, but we might find a grant or like there might be some funding that we didn't realize we were eligible for that could come in and save the day. It was, you know.
Could happen.
Wish on a star.
But it's not, we can't promise you that.
Well, I did laugh, I nodded my head in agreement.
What did you do out of the world?
It is, it is my experience that in this Silver Lake Regional School District and Union Thirty-One, we have been very good at getting entitlement grants. But competitive grants for, through the state and competitive grants through the federal government isn't something that has been aggressively sought and it's time to do that.
Here are your opportunities.
And again, it's an educational process, not a learning, like, this is educational. So, as far as the future.
For my information, do we have somebody on the central office that focuses on applying for grants on our behalf?
We do not have a grants manager in central office.
We work as hard as we can to acquire the money that's entitled to us by the federal government and keep track of it. So, we work tirelessly on that. There are grant opportunities pursued. Melissa Farrell works hard on those. Our curriculum coordinators at other levels do that. The restrictions on those though, aren't quite the size of the entitlement grants from the federal government. So, and they also prioritize other districts, sometimes that have different need structures than ours. So, to Sarah's point, they're hard to land because sometimes they want to see demographic data that doesn't match the profile of our, our district. But if anybody has additional capacity and sees grants that work, they will, people try as they can to secure additional funds. There was the early literacy grant that helped out. We spent down ESER one, two, and three, so we try, but where, where really, just to land the entitlement grants is, you know, it's work in our, it's work, it's work. Sure.
Is there any other discussion? So, if we do all these cuts to get to where the town wants us to, what would be the budget number we would vote tonight?
Six million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars.
Six million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? I'll make a motion that we pass the Halifax budget for FY twenty-five at six million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollar.
Hold on a second.
All right, we'll do a vote. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Now, we will move on. Is there anything, any other updates, Principal Bowdre?
Nope.
I think that's everything. All right, we'll turn the time over to Sarah, Miss Sicky.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have been notified by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that Halifax Elementary School has qualified for Circuit Breaker Extraordinary Relief for FY twenty-four totaling two hundred sixty thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars. These funds are divided into three categories. Extraordinary relief, which is paid through Circuit Breaker, and that's a hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars. Extraordinary relief paid through reserve relief, thirty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars. And reserve relief paid from reserve relief for seventy-seven thousand, four hundred twenty-nine dollars. The extraordinary relief through Circuit Breaker is, the hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred forty-seven dollars is going to be a payment that we receive in May that must be spent by June. That will be applied to the FY twenty-four budget. The two reserve relief amounts will also be received in May and can be either spent by June or held over for next year. The two reserve relief amounts are deducted from next year's Circuit Breaker payment. So, that, those are funds that we would hold on to if at all possible, but we have them available should we need them.
So, we have them available for this year, but can, but they'll be put against what we would get next year if we use them. If we use them this year, then we aren't seeing it next year. It's basically like a pay, or like, it's an advance on the.
It's an advance on our Circuit Breaker for next year.
Okay.
So, we can use it this year if we have to and we can hang on to it and use it with Circuit Breaker, the regular Circuit Breaker, next year.
Okay.
And so, that's all I have for Circuit Breaker unless you have questions. The financial report that was in the school committee folder, there's a number of lines. The FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget takes these lines all into consideration. Right now, there's a deficit in legal fees, whereover our retainer, the Sturm Chandler Miller, there's a deficit in homeless transportation, there's a deficit in electricity and gas, and there continues to be a deficit in PD, that's tuition reimbursement for teachers. And at our June meeting, I will be coming to you with specific line item transfers to cover these deficits.
Are we going to be able to cover the deficits?
At this point, yes.
Okay.
Pending no surprises.
I'm only laughing because this year's been full of surprises. I hope, no more.
There's a deficit in the principal supply line, the tech hardware. There's a deficit in the principal supply line, the tech hardware line, and the guidance testing materials line. Those are all absorbed within the categories. There's a deficit in special education contracted services and tuition of two hundred eighty-five thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars, which will be offset with both FY '24 Circuit Breaker and the previously mentioned Extraordinary Relief.
So, we will be using it as of now?
Well, the hundred forty-seven thousand that has to be used by June 30th.
Okay.
That could be used.
Well, yeah, for sure. I bet not, okay.
And that concludes my report.
Does anyone have questions? Okay, thank you. Ryan, Mr. Lewis?
Inside the school committee folder, I shared, asked the request by the school committee for an overview of DEI efforts at Halifax and superintendentcy Union 31. So, I outlined the areas where there's a district DEIB committee, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, professional development that touches on related work, including working with the Anti-Defamation League in 2002, our curriculum efforts, including our social-emotional learning curriculum, and our compliance with state regulations and federal law, and just include the last bullet points on the ways in which our current policies reflect equity and inclusion around our Title IX process, bullying, Section 504 accommodations, our mandated trainings on harassment, confidentiality, and things like that. So, I hope this overview is helpful, and I'm open to answer any questions anybody may have about our work in those areas.
I appreciate you supplying it. I looked through it. I do have a couple of questions. I think I just would rather, like, shoot, you know, Karen, if that's okay, rather than talk through it here, and maybe we can talk more about it.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dr. Prue?
So, I have, I only have one item, and that is to recognize that this is Teacher Appreciation And I feel it's important to recognize our teachers who support and make our students feel safe and help encourage them to want to learn and be excited about learning. So, again, thank you, HTA and our Teachers Association.
We do really, really appreciate you. All right, dates to remember, May 27th is Memorial Day, May 31st is Silver Lake graduation with a rain date of June 1st, June 6, 2024, is an early release date for grades six through 12, so I guess it doesn't impact HES. Oh, it says grade six through 12, is it?
Six through 12 is being, has that early release?
June 6 is not K through 6.
What is, oh...
I'm sure it's K through 6, at least.
Yeah, it's K, it's K six.
Okay. K through six is an early release on June 6. And June 14th is the last day of school. And then, can I have a motion to go into executive session to not come back into open sessions, please?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, not returning to regular session per MGL C 30A, Section 21A, for a discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining for contractual negotiation. Administrative associate to the principal of food service employees and parent professionals. An executive session pursuant to MGL C 38S 21A7 to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law approved or of executive session minutes from April 1, 2024.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Thanks, everyone.